I want to call the work session on March 4th, order at 7:30 p.m. Make it notice that we have three members of the public present. Can I have role call please?
Mr. Banta?
Yeah.
Dr. Cohen here. Mrs. Frankel?
Here.
Ms. Quackenhead here. Mr. Rosenberg?
Present.
Mr. Santana?
Present.
Mr. Spindell?
Present.
Mrs. Wallace? Mr. Barbour.
Present.
New Jersey Open Public Meeting Board was enacted to ensure the rights of the public to advance notice of and to attend meetings of the public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the fail on Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof distributed to the persons on the approved list, posted in the Board of Education Administrative Office, and sent to the Bergen Record and the Star Ledger. The announcement posting for the work session budget along with the date, place, and time thereof were distributed on February 7, 2019. The items to be discussed during the closed work session if needed of the work session budget may include personnel matters, student matters, legal matters, negotiations, under grievances, and tactics and techniques utilized in protecting public safety and property. The results of these discussions will remain public as soon as possible. Please draw me a flag, so please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we're going to turn the meeting over to our business administrator, Mark Bartley, who's going to give you a preliminary budget overview for 2019, 2020 budget.
Thank you, Ms. Bartley.
You're welcome.
Okay, I just want to remind everybody, this is our preliminary budget numbers. We're still missing very key information from the state of New Jersey. Tomorrow, we're anticipating the governor to give his address, which will help inform what our state aid figures are going to look like, what our extraordinary aid grant allocations would look like. So until that time, it's probably within the next two days, we still don't have all of those numbers. We're still waiting for some additional information locally as well. So far, what have we done during the budget process? You know, we start our budget process very early in Fairlawn because of how large our budget is, starting around October. We started looking at what are our, where can we save money? Where are we spending? Where are we projecting? How can we move forward? So some of the areas that we really looked at in the past two years, this is a common theme of cost savings. We looked at supplies, utilities, custodial costs, which is also supplies as well, our substitute teaching, added district special education. We've also revamped our entire purchasing manual this year, and by doing that, we were able to look at the way we're purchasing and see if there's a better, more efficient way of purchasing. We've also been reallocating a lot of our expenses for us to be able to capture some additional grant funding, estate funding. So it's really just a way of us keeping track of these expenses and hopefully put in for additional funding where we can. So right now, we're still at a standstill, as I said, we're still waiting for some key information. We continue to build the budget, we continue to look at it, we continue to meet with stakeholders in the district and revise our figures as we get new information. So right now, our goal, as always, is to provide the best possible education at the least possible cost. So these are the areas I just spoke of that we're still waiting on, and this is a huge component of our budget. So if you picture our budget, it's like a giant jigsaw puzzle. These are big pieces of the puzzle that without that information, we do the best we can to put it together. These are all state and federal grant funding and assessments. So until we have that information, we keep it at a very low percentage. We don't budget at 100% of what we received this year.
Brooke, could you just explain what IVDA is?
Sure. So this is the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. This is a federal grant. ESSA was formerly called NCLB, so No Child Left Behind. Extraordinary is another opportunity for us to get federal grant money back for special education expenses. And pension is our PERS assessment. We pay that component for our PERS-covered employees. That's public employee retirement system, so it's our non-certificated staff. And then, of course, state aid. So based on this flat state aid and a lower percentage of our grant allocations that we just talked about, we're still supporting and continuing our mental health and district-wide school security initiative. That was a big component of last year's budget. We're able to continue to fit that in. It also supports our one-to-one technology initiative for the ninth graders. It also supports upgrades to the elementary school kitchens. We're moving out to have a bulk serving in our elementary schools like we did at Warren Point. We're going to do one school a year. It also supports all the New Jersey Student Learning Standards, which is all of our curriculum, what we have to support. Resources for deal and access, these are all testing, so again, we need to support the district so that we can provide the testing that's required. It also supports the implementation of Next Generation Science Standards. Again, this is a state-required curriculum component. It also supports Teach NJ Law and Achieve, which is the evaluation system. It also supports new staff and facilities projects.
Brooke, we skipped over one. It maintains all existing staff.
Oh, I'm sorry? Yes. It maintains all of our existing staff and all of our programs that we currently have. It allows us to also add new staff and facilities projects. So what does our budget look like? What do we know about the budget? Is there just some key? So we have a $79.1 million obligation for salaries and benefits. We have a $984,000 obligation in mental health initiative. We have $520,000 in our special threes and security initiative. And we also have $3.1 million in debt service payments. So this includes the referendum, which is hitting this year in 1920. There's also, last year, we decided to take the weighted enrollment and the healthcare adjustments. That second half comes into this year's budget. So again, preliminary numbers, here's where we are. Our minimum budget, just coming out of the gate for 1920, so all your salaries, all your health benefits, debt service referendum, we start out at $23.64 a month. We take the additional aid that we appropriated last year, the 1.325, and we reduce our budget. We also appropriate fund balance, $1.5 million of our fund balance, to help reduce next year's budget, which is $4.86. It brings this down to $14.49 a month. We've added $704,000 in new staff. This includes general education teachers, gifted and talented teachers, a music teacher, an ELL teacher, staff to support...
Reach.
Reach, yep. Gifted and talented program, and the tech, the staff needed for technology to support the one-to-one initiative. We also have in there our one-to-one initiative. So for all the devices, the implementation, the imaging, all of that is in there. So our recommended minimum budget is $17.44. So again, this is preliminary draft, we're still waiting for figures, but this is what it looks like at the current moment.
So I just wanted to reiterate exactly what your staff is and being included in that budget. Two general education teachers that can hopefully help with the impact of the referendum, prepare for hopefully reducing class sizes at elementary level if possible. Two special education teachers to, you know, move forward with our inclusion method that we're, inclusion model that we're going forward with. One music teacher, one reach teacher for the gifted and talented program. A one-to-one project manager that would be at the high school to help drive the educational curriculum piece of it, as well as a one-to-one tech, because we're going to be adding over 600 new devices to the high school. In addition to a secretary in the business office, especially with the referendum and everything that's coming up, we're going to need an extra set of hands there as well. And a transition coordinator for the high school to help special needs students get, prepare for post-secondary 18 to 21, and then what do they do after they leave the high school?
Yeah, so can you please explain to me, where in that budget is the promised $1 million that we're giving back to the state?
So that, so the way we wanted to show that is, this is a state aid that we received in 1819 that we pushed forward into 1920. So we're taking that $1.3 million and reducing what the tax impact is by $4.29.
So that's the...
So that, yep, so that's the additional aid.
That's the $4. Everybody said that they didn't want. Right, okay, there it is.
Yes, so there it is, coming into reduce next year's 1920's tax impact budget.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Some point of information, in the, what's those, page six, you mean by weighted enrollment?
So over the last couple of years, beginning with the 1617 school year, we received what's called a weighted enrollment adjustment. So what the state of New Jersey does is it looks at our trends based on our ASSA and our NJ Smart reporting. What they saw was exactly what we all saw, was that we are having a huge increase in student enrollment. What they do is they create a calculation, which is a weighted average, of how much students we've received over the past couple of years and what they're projecting moving forward using a formula. And what happens is they basically take our last year's tax levy and say, based on the number of students, you're entitled to an additional $1 million. So you'll see, and later on in the next slide, will show you which, how much of a weighted enrollment adjustment we're getting this year. So over the past couple of years, the state is recognizing, you have an enrollment issue, you have a growth, you have a growth in Fairlawn. So part of the new staff that we're talking about is to direct that enrollment. We know the students are here, we know they're coming, we know we need additional teaching staff to support those additional students. So the term weighted enrollment is basically something the state comes up with, it's calculated through their software. It's not something that Pat or myself can actually calculate because it's some crazy formula that they use that they automatically just stick in.
To put in layman's terms, correct me if I'm wrong, so every year the state calculates that, and every year we may get special extra funding based on that.
So it's not extra funding, what it is, is they immediately apply it to your tax levies. So it's a very, the state says, hey, we recognize you need more money, so take it out of your taxes. They're not actually giving us any more funding or state aid. All they're doing is saying, your tax levy last year was 87, but based on the number of your students, it should have been 88 million. So this is an automatic adjustment that happens on the state's end.
Yes, I'm marking the line.
I think there is question.
I don't want an answer to this, I just wanted to make a comment. I understand that you made mention of a new secretary due to the fact that we're having the referendum and it would help in that. I just want you to consider that, once this referendum is done and over within another two years, the question I have is, are we still going to need this secretary that you're proposing now? So I would hope that consideration would be given to the possibility of adding whatever additional job responsibilities there may be to one of the secretaries now. I know that they're working hard, I know that they have a lot of work to do, but hopefully we could save some of that $50,000, $60,000 that would be going to a new secretary, because if it's strictly for the referendum, there's going to be no need for it in two or three years.
I can answer that.
Yes.
I said one of the things was because of the workload of the referendum. But because we're, have a huge focus on our technology department and our technology in the district, we're growing a lot, and that's the best way to describe it. At Brooks' office, there were two secretaries there, and one of them was, you know, helping with the business office and technology, was reallocated to just the technology department where she works all the time now, which left a gap in the business office. So right now, we are, you know, the workload that comes out of the business office, which we all know, is unbelievable, and we see a need there to have additional... And that's why we brought through the personnel committee that's here. It's not, and we did say this is not something that we know, yes, the referendum is a huge piece of it, but that's not the only reason. So it wasn't something that, you know, we want all a referendum secretary, fund it out of the referendum and say, okay, two years from now, okay, now it's gone. We know that this is an area that we feel that we really need help. But I understand what you're saying. Yeah, no, absolutely.
Mike?
I just wanted to make sure everyone realizes what you said, and I want to make sure that I realize what you said. So the extraordinary aid is money that automatically gets added to our budget.
People weighted enrollment adjustments.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
Paid for by taxpayers.
Yes.
But it automatically, so the state's not saying, we're going to give you $1 million. The state's saying, they're going to increase taxes for the people of Fairlawn by...
Yes, exactly.
That much money. Interesting, always interesting. Emily?
Is this, these figures in terms of the monthly tax increase are based on the projected state aid, like your best guess? Or the state aid's not in here yet?
It's based on a flat state aid, a reduction in our grant allocation, so extraordinary aid, all these components that help build our budget. So the tax levy is a one-piece, then we have all the revenue that we anticipate. So until we hear from the state where they say, we're funding this or we're funding that, we're always told, err on the conservative side. So these figures are very conservative.
Like assuming worst-case scenario?
Assuming worst-case scenario.
Okay. I was going to ask something else. What about the tax levy in terms of ratables from businesses? Have those been updated?
Those are not reflected in these figures.
When did we find out about?
We're hoping that this week we'll have, we'll have that piece as well, so we enter everything into the software, which would be hopefully our final time that we look in there. So just in terms of timeline, we know we have to have our, we need to have our budget down to the county office by March 15. So on the 14th, we're going to present again where we think, where our numbers are based on all the information we're waiting for. Hopefully, that there's not some stall at the state level as well, which would extend our deadline like last year to the new governor in the office. So until we have that, this is just very preliminary and very conservative.
So the numbers for our ratables from businesses and new developments and people's assessments going up over time, is it, is there any assumption of like, well, was this last year and this going to increase?
No, we assume flat.
It's assumed flat.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Wolf said the cost of this new staff. Is there any, is there any possibility of utilizing money, or money saved through retirement and attrition for the end of the year? Does the district look, does the district look into that?
So the two, two special acquisitions actually were funded through retirements.
Oh, great.
So the two that I mentioned there were funded. We also had a list of staff, a little longer than this, actually, but then we said that we know that, you know, the referendum's here, that we were very conscious of what the taxpayers are going to be taking on here, and we broke down the list of what we need and what we want, and two very different things. And we said, these are things that we think would be great, but we also have to be mindful of where we go with our budget. So the staff that we build here, this is staff that we need from the district in order for us to continue moving forward. And then, you know, maybe when the referendum's done, or another time, or something like that, we could circle back to maybe some of the staff that we would like to see.
Our, the budget that we have here is based on enrollment figures, right? The more, the more students that we have, the more staff we need, right? All right. Do we have, Mr. Nelson, do we have any personnel that watches over potential students that do not reside in our community? My concern is, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of people in town with the same concern, is that how, how is a district being aggressive and proactive in finding students that do not live here, and let's say they use fake addresses? I don't think that it's fair to defer on taxpayers, and how can we maximize whatever resources we have in place to make sure that, you know, we're not paying for students that are not in...
We have a whole office that oversees that.
Okay.
And we work on that, and you'll probably see some more of that in the spring coming our way as a board, but we met last week and thought, well, we have a whole office that oversees that. We have software that actually flags people that may not be living here, verification, we're constantly, what's the name of that company?
Verify residency.
Verify residency. Right. It's like... We dis-enrolled quite a few this year. Yeah, so we, this rolled almost like 15, 16 kids.
I thought we'd be like 35, but...
Well, I mean, I think, you know what? I think you're right. We collect money from those that...
Yeah.
I think you're right, we only had like 15 appeals.
Yeah.
But we did about 35.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, no, we're very progressive.
All of us are very progressive.
Very compared to a lot of the issues as well.
I think the district, I think the district, because that is a concern of a lot of folks in town.
It's a concern of ours too. Big time.
Of course, almost, but I think maybe if we can, that's what, as a board member, I would like to see, if we can make sure that we are supporting 100%, we already, we already supporting the office that does that, if we can maximize what they're doing, because, you know, we have to watch every cent that comes out of our...
Hold on, hold on, one second. That's, I got mine. That's why we went through this verify residency program, because basically what it does is that when you register a certain times, it'll pick up, it'll pick up things, because it goes through all your bills, it goes through a lot of different things. So it was a better system we have. We also have a truant officer here too, so if we have, anybody gets reported or something, that person will, you know, find out, make sure everybody's living there or not, and like I said, if you haven't been to one yet, in the spring you will, you'll see some appeals come through as normal. But like, as Brooke stated, we probably disenrolled over 35 to 36 kids last year, and we had about 15 appeals and all of them were denied too, so. So we're very, very proactive to the board, the previous superintendent, Ernie, had introduced it to us, and it's a great program. Mike Shansky's very, very applied. And if you rent in this town, you got, every time your lease comes up, you got to do a verification to make sure we're still, so we're well into it. Mike, you have to handle it.
Yeah, that, that's, as we discovered over the years, that's, that's a very, it's a very real issue, but we also, we also found out, or I found out through going through these hearings, first of all, the stories are absolutely ridiculous sometimes, but there's also a lot of laws against us as a district and a town. So kids that are in split homes, kids that are in, homeless kids that just happen to end up in Fairlawn, and other, and other things that are going on, the law is not on our side when it comes to that, and we found that out a couple times. And what the public doesn't know about this, because there's always people that are saying that we have tons of kids that don't belong here, what the public doesn't realize is that there is all these situations that come up, and they don't know those situations and they don't know the law. So when we, when we get it in here, and you'll find out, as Ron said, you'll find out that that is a lot of stories and it's a lot of legal stuff, and Mr. Green has to do his thing.
Elise?
I just wanted to say on this topic, that another thing that the public, I don't think realizes, when we go on to students that are in our schools, that the ones that really don't belong there, monetarily, in many occasions, it's not a big difference, unless they're the 26th kid in the kindergarten dress and we have to hire a teacher to have two classes. You know, if you have, if you have, if you have, you know, 24 kids in a class or 23 kids in a class, when you remove that student, you still need the teacher, you still need the books, you still need, you know what I mean? So monetarily, you know, overall, if 30 kids left the district, it's not like, oh, 30 kids, that's one teacher. You know, you're not saving your teacher's salary, because those 30 kids are across all the grades in all the different schools, so my, if, I have no problem not having students that don't belong here, here, but, but, you know, removing them, but they just have to remember that monetarily, it sounds like, oh, 30 kids were removed to save the teacher's salary, that could be, you know, $20,000, but it's, but it's not, because all your classrooms still exist. I just wanted to mention that as something to consider.
You go ahead, Emily.
I just want to comment that I think in the spirit of our retreat, we're going down a little bit of a rabbit hole here, so I'd like to just propose that we let our professional get through the PowerPoint slides and see comments and questions as we finish.
No problem. All right, good.
Okay, so the header slide, it shows us what the potential tax increase is. So I mentioned the weighted enrollment adjustment before, you'll see this year, the state has automatically given us an adjustment of $648,000. What this does is allows us to grow the tax levy by 1.799377. So when people talk about the 2% cap or the 2% increase, this is the 2% of what our tax levy is. In addition to that 2%, the state allows us to grow our tax levy by providing additional adjustments as well. We'll see a healthcare adjustment of $127,000. The state allows that by acknowledging that our healthcare costs continue to increase and say, we understand this is something that you have to pay for, and realize that the rates are increasing higher than what your 2% could possibly ever maintain. So they've given us another $127,000. We also have what we refer to as bank cap. And what this represents is that for several years, we have never gone up to cap. And by cap, what that means is the 2% and any other available adjustments, the state says, you could have gone higher, you don't, we're going to let you bank that tax levy cap for use in future years. So we currently have $400,000 available to us for bank cap. So what we're saying in this slide is, this is the total tax we could possibly increase, not the minimum budget, saying, this is your total tax adjustments and levy increase as you could. What does this look like on the average assessed home? $22.26 a month. To Emily's point, this is the same figure as last year. Until we have that information, we make the same assumptions. We don't make an assumption, well, last year it went up 2%, we're going to increase it 2%, we keep it flat. Same slide as last year, and as a point of consideration for us to have information from the board to move forward, if this is even an option or something you're interested in doing, we put together additional items to go up to the max. So again, we're currently at $17.44, preliminary, should you choose to use any of those adjustments, part of them, any of them, all of them, these are some items that were discussed through budget committees, needs that maybe came through administration or the public or any other type of, type of information.
This would be the wish list. These are the things that through committees, through administration, Brooke said, this is the want, not, you know...
Not the necessity.
Not the necessity.
So the first thing we have is an LGTC teacher. Nick could certainly speak to that better than I can. An additional ELL teacher, so this is English ESL, English Language Learner, two or three private buses with a three-point seatbelt, upgrading all the security cameras from analog to digital, an additional security upgrade, it's a 911 information system, it provides a mapping component, which will show immediately on a map to police officers where a 911 call is dispatched from, one-to-one technology, two additional grades, right now we've built into the budget ninth grade, staff to support that additional grades, a special ed finance staff, this is somebody who would hopefully maximize all of our grants, and looking at purchasing, looking for places to save, a dance teacher.
Is that for the Board of Retreat?
What?
Dance teacher.
Oh, yeah. The what, to the...
I thought I'd get more.
The what, to the Martin. So part of what, a big component of CHU's act this year, which we saw come out of the state for state monitoring, is there's now a new curriculum requirement to have a dance teacher at a secondary level with an option, with a choice of a child to take dance. And a centralized supply initiative, this is something that would, instead of everybody ordering their own supplies, would be a more efficient way of supplying, it would help us keep track, it would... It would help us keep track. It would change who we purchase. I think it would be a really great cost-saving initiative for the district.
I just wanted to ask a question first.
You're good.
Two things. One, the cameras upgrade from analog to digital, is that on the recommendation of our security director?
It was on the recommendation of the security director and it was something that came out last year as well.
Yes, I know, we had discussed.
Yeah.
And refresh me what you just said, that the, out of the CUSAC, the state.
Yeah, so we.
New districts to have a dance teacher, which I'm not against, but all of a sudden, again, you want us to have something or you don't want to give money to have it?
They don't fund that one.
Okay, I mean, it's ridiculous. Yeah, and I mean, being serious, it's ridiculous.
It's another unfunded mandate.
Another mandate that they don't want to fund the state. Okay, thank you. Gene.
That centralized supply initiative.
Yeah.
That's a person, right? That's somebody.
A person and a software system in order to facilitate that.
Now, is that a certificated position or is that just?
I would assume not.
Okay.
There are other districts that have a centralized supply. We have some components of that already in existence, for instance, like toner cartridges and printer cartridges. We maintain them centralized so we know who's asking for what. It helps us maintain it. We don't have stock sitting around going bad. It would be that same application, but for all the supplies across the whole district.
But just, whenever the state comes up with these kind of things, I've often seen them, and now it's a certificated position. So instead of finding somebody maybe with some kind of experience in that, they have to go get certificated, which makes it that much more difficult, as I'm writing down. No, it's not a CUSAC thing, but a lot of times when you say, well, you have to have this person, and he's got to be certificated, and there's only four of them in state.
This is something that we spoke about, about, you know, we have.
Are we not us, we?
No, administration, nine-hundred-plus staff members, how many teachers? Everybody's ordering, order, I need this for my classroom, I need this for my office, I need this. There could be potential for us to consolidate, have a centralized location. We need this, this is how it is. We have, we buy in bulk from the district, whatever it is, and we think it would be a huge cost savings to the district rather than everybody ordering individually and just having one centralized supply area.
Mike.
All right, so do you think that the centralized supply person will save us over ninety-five thousand dollars?
Yes.
So that'd be an interesting.
Yes.
Maybe they might be able to lower the supply budget and then it might pay for itself. Dance teacher case. Does that teachers aren't, aren't certified to teach dance anymore?
The requirement at the secondary level, it has to be a certified dance teacher.
This is case twelve, yeah. Yes. I know, it did the way that the department has looked at it. But right now, what we did was we just adopted dance curriculum, just so we have it adopted. But we're not, you know, this isn't on here or this is, this is in no particular order. This is in by, this is our first thing we want and this is our last thing we want.
It's not in priority, no.
No, it's not prioritized by any means. Any other question I have? So we bought buses this year, or we retrofitted buses with?
We ordered.
No, we didn't retrofit.
Yeah, we ordered when we had the additional state aid, we took two additional buses. We do have four buses that are coming online in the next two years. And this would just be a way of us capturing, putting the three-point seatbelts on.
How many, how many buses do we have online right now? That.
Around thirty-seven.
No, no, no. Get the hell back. That don't have three-point seatbelts.
I think we have, currently have five, I believe, with three-point seatbelts. There's a three.
I'm talking about big, like big buses, like.
More passenger buses? I don't know off the top of my head, but I can certainly get that information back to you. I know once that hap, once that happened, we were buying the buses, we certainly purchased them with a three-point seatbelt.
Right.
And now any bus moving forward, it's now mandated that it will have to be sold with a three-point seatbelt in Jersey.
I just want to make sure that the seventeen dollars or the twenty-two dollars does not include the referendum.
It does.
It does.
It does. So that seventeen includes the referendum. It includes your debt payment.
Did a great job.
Wait, no, it doesn't include the, the bonds that we have to pay back.
No, it does. It does.
Yes.
The ten dollars for.
Yeah, it does.
This is, I don't know how you did it.
I know.
Not very much.
Thanks.
Well, I thought it was an addition.
You want to speak next?
Yeah, no, this is including the referendum.
I just want to speak on one thing real quick, although I'm sorry.
You have time.
The security upgrade and the nine-one-one information system, this is something that I came across at my last conference I went to, my technology conference. What this does is this allows us to bring our district's security to the next level of, you know, if there was a threat in the building, that it would have a map laid out from the computer. So a police officer would be able to see that we're in this room, and we called nine-one-one from this room. The police officers would see schematic of the whole building of Edison, and it would pop up like red, room nineteen, red, nineteen. So when they pulled up, they would be able to pull up right outside this room. They would know this is where we called from. They would be able to talk to us from inside the phones. We would be able to go, the administrators, a building administrator, superintendent, VA, put the school in lockdown by one button. It's just, it would do maps, schematic maps of every school in Fair Lawn. That's the forty-seven, yes. What it does is, it, you know, if our rooms, and you know, Mark, previous administrator.
That's where we're.
You would understand that if sometimes our rooms may be room number two, four, six, and then it may be thirteen. Because maybe it was a room that we converted, maybe, whereas if you're coming, if you're a police officer coming in, you would just think it was two, four, six. If it was, if you're room thirteen, you're gonna automatically look for the odd number. This would lay it out for them, where they would see right the schematic, thirteen's right there, and be able to get to it as quick as possible. Orthorns just rolled it out, I spoke to superintendent about two hours ago. He's just been thrilled with how great it's been and the positive feedback they've had so far. So it's just something that I thought we would be able to, with our director of security, look into and that's why I was up here.
Welcome.
I think just to address what Mike stated about the buses, maybe, you can stick as chair of the finance group, why we'll have the, why the buses were not able to be retrofitted, I think it will be useful.
They were not able to, they weren't able to retrofit it because nobody would certify. None of the companies would certify. Nobody wants, nobody wants the. No, I'm saying those, they're not, they're not built that way.
I got it.
So that's unfortunate, but now everybody's gonna have them.
My, how much, how much of, how much of the budget increase, the tax increase, is the referendum exact?
We had estimated it at about seven dollars. We got our bond rate at three point one three.
And that's with the, with the bond?
That's, yeah, that's making all the assumptions of where we are with what our interest rate was and where anticipated debt service from the state has, which is that forty percent coupon we had all spoken about when we were going through the referendum.
Mr. North, looking at the additional, the additional items listed there, you know, I don't wanna, I just wanna make sure that, you stated this, this list is our, our want, not our need. But I see items that concern me as far as safety is, you know, safety. So just to clarify, all the items that are listed there, those are needs, not, those are wants, not needs.
It's a wish list.
It is a wish list, including the nine, the nine-one-one information syst, system, the security cameras going digital, that's. We don't have to have it for.
We don't have to have it. I mean, it was, it's one of those things that would just, you know, bring our district to the next level as a, as a, you know, as it relates to school security and safety. I mean, do I think it would be great? Yes. But do I think, I would have to say that, you know, we would be impacting education and our students if we didn't have it? No, I wouldn't. That's why it's on a list of things that we would like to have, but I can't tell you, you know, we, we need more elementary teachers. We know that. We know that we need, you know, an additional music teacher. We know, those things, we know we need. These are things that we think we would love to have for the district, but right now, I wouldn't be able to put it in the budget. So we definitely need this, but we can't move forward in the district.
Number twelve, centralized supply initiative. If, if that is a potential, if that item potentially saves us money, would you agree that it would pay, it would pay for itself?
I agree.
And we may, we may wanna, if we would pay for itself, it may save money to the taxpayers. We may want to reconsider that, I think. If it pays for itself and it was gonna save us money, then I think, and you, and you have it in a, in a, on the, on the one category, I think it's a, it's a no-brainer, if, if my fellow board members agree. I know I asked about retirement and attrition. Is there any, do we have a deadline where we know how many people will be? I don't think we retire up to the last minute, but.
So there are, there are contractual obligations in regards to the staff and the board where people are supposed to notify us by a certain timeline of what their intentions are. As we go through this budget process, when we have retirement, we continue to make adjustments to our budget. So this is, the budget process is very fluid. I sit with our personnel director probably daily at certain times in order to capture the most, the latest information because we know that we'll see in the next pie chart, our largest budget requirement is staff salaries and benefits.
One last thing. Is there, Mr. North, is there any possibility that any of the, the items here listed could be funded through attrition or retirement in this year?
I have no crystal ball. I don't know, listen, look, in my experience, the date has passed, by the way, that staff members usually let us know by. However, it does not mean from now into the school year that we don't always see a couple of retirements. There's a chance we made, we may not see any. There's a chance that, you know, somebody may, somebody spells they get relocated, they decide to retire. Or they decided, you know what, that's it, even though I passed the deadline, I still would like to retire. It happens. So there's a chance that it could happen, but I have no crystal ball and I would be, you know, going down somewhere I wouldn't want to go by saying, let's fund this on a, on a, on a day.
Elise first.
Appreciate it. Yeah, no problem.
Yes.
Brooke, I just have a real quick question for Elise goes, the two additional buses with the three-point, and you stated that four buses or schedules go offline in the next two years.
Yeah.
So we're gonna have to purchase new buses to replace them in the next two years. So if we purchase them now under this budget, then there'll be two less we'd have to do in future budgets. Am I correct?
Yes, exactly.
That's, I just wanted to know, as I thought I understood it correctly. Plus, we're ahead of the, plus, we're ahead of the game, plus, we're ahead of the game with the three-point seatbelts and cameras.
Yeah.
Elise and Emily.
I was just curious if there's, like, a reason to purchase two buses at a time? Or, or if you could do one, is there a reason that you do two is cheaper or better or?
Oh, you mean just a few at a time rather than buy more?
One bus. Rather than buying, like, you did one bus this year and one bus next year instead of two buses this year to lessen a little bit the impact. Because I was, I'm looking at this list and I'm thinking that the security cameras in the six and seven, you know, to be like, I wouldn't do eleven only because the state sometimes, you know, ten years ago, they said, oh, they kindergarten and then said, forget it because people couldn't, didn't have a place for it. So sometimes they back off on, you know, requirements like that. So, you know, if we're, if we're addressing it through, you know, curriculum in the gym classes, then, you know, like, we might not need that this year.
I'd rather, honestly, if they ask teacher number eleven, I'd rather wait and hold off on that and then come back to the board. If the state comes down and says, you need to have this, let's have that conversation about how we're gonna figure out how to fund it, rather than put it in and then the state never.
Right, that's what I'm, that's what I'm, that's what I'm thinking, but.
And I think every district's kinda like, wait, what? How are we gonna do this? So everybody's kinda doing the same thing right now. We don't have enough information on this.
Right. I was just thinking that in terms of the security and the supply initiatives, minerals or things, I think that we should. We could discuss them all, but I just came through my head, and I would definitely get a bus or two buses, it just depended on how, you know, how that works.
Buying, and Brooke could speak this better than I can, but buying a couple of buses every year is not a bad strategy for us. How many years is it? Fourteen or fifteen?
We have fifteen years.
Fifteen years, every, no matter how many miles you put on a school bus. You could put one mile on a school bus, you could put a hundred thousand miles on it, fifteen years, students are not allowed to be transported by it. So I've seen districts buy ten school buses at a time and then fifteen years, like, oh, we have to buy ten more buses now, and it cripples their budget. So buying a couple every year and just keep replenishing them is a good financial strategy.
And I just wanted to point out something as well. The purpose of the presentation, we're showing to upgrade all of the cameras. You could also tell us, let's just do half of the camera that is. To Nick's point, we've been on a refreshed cycle, where we do, we are upgrading the cameras as we go along. This is saying, we're gonna do it all in one shot. You can do half, you can do, you know, quarter of that amount for that. In addition, as a buses as well, you could say, let's do one bus this year and then let's not do another.
But with the cameras, just with the cameras, wasn't like hard, most of the schools are already digital? So, well.
Not all.
Well, that's what I mean. There were a couple of schools that were on digital.
Correct.
They all have a, they have, they all have, I think about a mix.
Right, right. Well, but I thought some were totally digital.
Well, some of them aren't, some of them, some of them were, we were able to do that through other projects that we were doing at the time, where we took those analogs and then we refurbished them elsewhere throughout the district.
Right, so, because my thought was, I, when I read that, I mean, I'm very literal, so when I read that, I think it's all the ones that aren't digital, being made digital, not replacing every camera in.
Yes, that, this is specifically taking our analog.
Taking the analogs out and, okay, so I'm all for that.
So the, Brooke had a question.
Sure.
Here, you have a list.
I know.
Right now or? Oh, I'll write it down. No, okay. Oh, he's gonna jump in front of you. I'm sorry. I'll let him go. All right.
Thank you. The two additional buses, are those exactly these purchased prices or is that purchased?
These are full, full price, yeah.
I'll wait. Mark's next. I, I don't know. Can I make a motion? Can I make a recommendation? Because I honestly think that we need the nine-one-one number seven to be included in our budget. Yeah, well, you can, I guess. I'm only, I'm only talking about, and I don't want people to think that I'm adding rather than taking away from the budget. Well, we're not, we're not, because you're, you're thinking of, you're just not, you know, just one point of information is that what Elise was saying, I mean, those things are important, but again, going back to, just refresh everybody, about five or six years ago, we were, we were gonna replace the seats in the high school auditorium, and we were only gonna do like thirty seats a shot. And I gotta be honest, at the time, with Joanne, it just annoyed me because I'm like, this is gonna stink. And fortunately, she was able to find money from another line and we did all of it once, and it worked out beautiful because they were able to do the whole job one shot, not piecemeal. So I'd like to see things done once and then not just like, let's do a couple here.
Point of information.
One second. Can I make that motion, recommendation?
I'll wait to see what else.
Yeah, why don't we go?
Yeah, why don't we like finish that? Let me, let me.
I'll take back my point of information. That was.
Emily, your turn.
I'm surprised to hear that our district has thirty-seven buses, as I understand a lot are used for students who are attending out of the district and for sports and activities, but as a district that doesn't really bus, thirty-seven sounds like a lot.
Well, it's mostly special education routes, so if you think about small buses, it's really a lot of the small buses. And don't quote me on thirty-seven, please, because that's just off the top of my head.
Now, if you go, if you look in your folder, you go to the transportation section, that'll explain the buses and routes that they go to.
I just was wondering if there are more cost-effective vehicles that could see, are we being efficient with?
Well, here's.
I'm just asking the question, if, like, if it looks into vans and stuff.
So we do have some, so the thirty-seven fleet includes vans.
Okay.
It includes wheelchair vehicles. It includes vehicles that we would use for transport around. We have the VOTEC program, so remember, we might have five students that aren't all necessarily going to the same location at the same time for sports. We have sports, all the field trips.
Vehicles, not necessarily all the same.
Okay, that helps me.
Yes.
I also wanted to just remind the board that I think last year, our average monthly tax increase was just shy of twenty dollars. We got it down to like nineteen dollars and something after a lot of conversation. And. And as someone who has looked at the history of tax increases in Fairlon, this is coming off the heels of successive years of heavier increases. I mean, for a while, the increases, I think, were closer to ten dollars and now the new norm is closer to twenty dollars. Um, and I realize we have our enrollment issues and it's expensive. So I just wanted to put that out there in terms of norms that increases year after year from the Board of Education. Just something that's on our mind.
Brooke, you have your hand up. Who's next?
You can escape me.
Okay. Brooke, we're continuing, please.
So I think, I'm just gonna go right to the, the next slide and then we can come back to this slide for discussion purposes. So this is just showing what, whatever, what is our budget actually made up of. This is our famous pie chart, which is a little bit like a Peppa Bismol color. So we have seventy-five percent of our entire budget are employee costs. So this entire piece of the pie is all employees and staff, but remember, we're in the business of education and education is people. It's not inventory, it's people, it's teachers, it's all the staff members. Eight percent is contracted services. So again, contracted services are additional services we provide for students. Professional services is our auditors, our attorneys, architects, therapists, any kind of professional services. The professional services is categorized by the state of New Jersey, so a lot of these things are really, this is what the state tells us to break it down this way. Supplies, utilities, repairs, and textbooks, these very small pieces of the pie, we'll see that only makes up four percent of our budget. Debt service, we're at four percent, which means four percent of our entire hundred and whatever million dollar budget is our, is our debt service payment. Two percent is miscellaneous and that does include our one-to-one initiative. So again, just bringing it back to, this is, this is how we balance, this is what our budget is really made up of. So how much can we control in terms of that? There's very little, little amount that we can control as, as a board or as a district because it's employee costs. So I'm going to, this is the end of my presentation. I'm gonna turn it over to the board now and you guys can provide information to me, um, or to Ron to let me know which ones you want to take into consideration so that Pat and I can go back and bring this information back to you on the fourteenth when we meet again. Listen, this is what the actual tax impact is and what's in our budget based on what you guys are thinking.
Brooke.
If, if, if the board agrees, I would like to make a motion, but I would like to have the information quantified in terms of, to make sure that number twelve on the additional item, uh, through the savings that that will bring, that that will pay for itself and what potential of savings we can pass on to the taxpayers as a result of having a centralized supply initiative. What would that entail and how would, how, how would that translate to savings for the taxpayer? So if, uh, if the board would agree, uh, I, I would like to, uh, to make a motion, uh, to consider that, if a motion is necessary. So that will be a point of information.
I heard it. I don't know if we need a motion. Just as to look into, yeah, just give a direction that we would like to see, like the security, six, seven, any of the additional items we would like to see and then, I mean, share the cost, but then things are gonna change. So, yeah, we don't need a motion for that, but Brooke, you kinda know exactly what's mixed up. Just a, a point of information, Emily, I hear what you're saying and, you know, from being on the board and before that, following the tax increases. And, you know, actually I have seen this and we were down for a while, then we went back up again. But also, uh, don't forget, we are carrying a referendum the last couple of years from Westmoreland. And to be honest with you, to have a twenty dollar and forty-two cents, uh, increase last month, uh, last year, I'm sorry. And now to add in a twenty-five million dollar referendum, they go up really basically to two dollars. And that's without our aid, we haven't even got the aid yet, so that number can actually go down. I think, I think they've done a great job. And I'm definitely, I'm, listen, I'm a taxpayer myself, I'm very conscious of taxes in this town. But we're growing and, I mean, we try to, you know, like I said, I know you asked a question about, um, the buses and I think a lot of people in this district don't realize that we go to fifty-seven different schools in the morning. That's a lot. Like, people have said to me and some other board members, looking into privatizing, first of all, there's a shortage of bus drivers right now for even private companies. That's a big shortage. Second of all, that is one of the things, a lot of times it's not as cheap. Number three, be very cautious of who they have on the bus. We did have a situation a couple of years ago where the bus driver did not speak English and it was a problem, so. And also too, just to let you know, if, and I'm saying probably do or don't, a lot of times I E Ps and stuff, they dictate the type of bus they gotta be on because that's just the way that they're set. Cause I actually asked that question about something that I didn't know. But I, I think it's good, I, I'm, I'm, I'll tell you right now, on the things that I'm on that list that I'm for, as, as Wilton said, the twelve. But I definitely am for the security and I would really look at the buses because they're only, it's saving money and it's, it's gonna happen eventually. And, and again, when you break it down to the, I mean, especially the security part, I mean, everybody in this, this, this community is big on security, which we all are, this board especially. I mean, that's, I, I like, I like what Nick's saying, I mean, that's, plus this kinda looks like, you know, a TV where they throw that big map out.
So what I'm thinking, um, what I'm hearing, what I'm thinking, I'm hearing is, correct me if I'm wrong, if I'm here. Five, six, seven, and twelve. Is that accurate? Wait, say that again?
Emily.
Brooke. I got you.
So with the centralized supply initiative and also the special education finance staff as two personnel positions that could save us money. I just wonder, someone in the office must be doing some of that now. So how come we have to pay more for those same functions to do it better? Shouldn't there be the ability to just enhance capacity from within within the regular budget of what we do as staff?
Being a director of special education and assistant superintendent overseeing student services, number ten, um, is very difficult because you're talking about grants, special education grants and financing and our special ed budget is already something, a million, around thirty million, give or take. Out of a hundred and some, a hundred, a hundred million dollars, you're going to get thirty percent, thirty-three percent. And when you're running a department that large and you have almost eleven hundred special ed students, the most in any district in Bergen County, and everything that comes along with that, to just focus your time on just the special ed grant piece of it, it's impossible. We do a great job with what we get back for extraordinary aid, how we handle IDA grants, but if you just had somebody, like, we've spoken about a grant person before in the past. If you had somebody whose sole position was to just focus on the special ed funding piece and the special ed grant piece of it, potentially back to a revenue piece. We may get even more back from extraordinary aid because that's all they're gonna be working on, that would fund that position probably by itself. Does that make sense?
Why call it the special education finance staff? Why not call it, uh, grant, but even in the, the grants revenue person?
I can speak to that a little bit as well. It's all, it's also about the, the purchasing component that goes on in the thirty million dollar department. So to speak to your point, aren't people doing it? Yes, me, Pat, Nick, Camille, secretaries. It's being brought up because I might be an expert in, in the accounting codes, Pat might be an expert in reading this, the semi-language. But there's aspects of it, when I talk about reallocation of grants, what that is, is every single purchaser that gets put in. So say there's nine thousand purchasers in Fairlon, I personally sign every single one of them and review every code. I have people who are, who is underneath that. But I know that just the coding drives our IDA, it drives our extraordinary aid, it drives our certified tuition rate, it falls into our A S S A. There's a component of what we report on everything smart in the A S S A, which are student base that ties in automatically to my finance component, where there might not be people who are financial experts in charting accounts or coding. So that all leads into, are we maximizing every aspect of what we're doing in special education? So we spend a lot of time running reports on which student is where, when you order an iPad, are you coding it to, to Emily? So that we can then take that information and report it to either semi-funding or extraordinary aid funding, to, to try to capture every penny that we possibly can. And we have been able to do that over the past couple of years with our extraordinary aid, just by Pat, myself, other people in the office having a critical eye and being able to look at it that way. But it's burdensome because like to Nick's point, there's eleven hundred students. They all have different needs and there's, and there's different coding and requirements that goes along with that. So the grants is one aspect of it. When you think about a thirty million dollar department, that kind of purchasing, reviewing possibly even transportation needs, working together with child studies and I'm looking at I E Ps and saying, you know, is there a better way we can do this? Is there sometimes, there was a meeting review and contrast language for some of the consultants.
Is there a way to make that position, like pilot the position and see what cost savings you achieve by having someone consult or do that kind of capacity building internally or train your business staff to be able to do that? Like, is there a way to get that without permanently committing to adding that staff person and seeing just how much it saves up?
I think, uh, to answer that point, any position we hire, I, I would assume would be somewhat of a pilot. I mean, if we're not happy with the direction it's going in and we have the ability as administration and the board to sit down and say, we're really getting what we thought we budgeted for or we probably signed up for? And then we have to take another look at that and say, is this worth it to continue with this direction? So I think if this is something that we were gonna move forward with, it would be something that I would think we would sit down and say, after a year, wow, this is great. Or, no, it's not and we need to, is this really worth it to deal with? So I mean, that's just a, that's just a fundamental question we need to answer.
And what about the centralized supply initiative in terms of that? That was my question too, about why isn't that being done? That just sounds like what we should be doing.
So currently we've decentralized, which means every school is ordering their own supplies. One of the initiatives we took last year was we reduced all of the schools' supply budgets, took that money and moved it over to our supervisors. So what we're doing now is ordering, no matter what school you're in, everybody's getting the same exact thing. We budget based on a per pupil cost. We want the supervisors to order and budget for this because we want it to be curriculum based. We want the supplies to be based on curriculum and education, not because somebody wants to buy bracelets and hand them out, which is a nice thing, but you can also do that in a, in a, in a different method. So to that same token, if you think about even our janitorial supplies across, we have eleven buildings, truly. Do we need, and the way we order, just in general, as a school district and every school district, we try to take advantage of purchasing cooperatives, but the way to do that is generally ordering in a bulk. I don't mind ordering in a bulk, but I don't wanna bulk, bulk, bulk in ten different places. Cause that's where things just sit around and that's when things also walk away. We all know from Accounting 101 that inventory, you gotta store it, you gotta secure it and you gotta ensure it, right? So anytime you have inventory based anywhere, you're losing money in some capacity. So this is something we've been talking about for a couple of years where just making very small initiatives, you know, like I'm saying with technology purchases, it's all, the entire district's technology is handled by only one department. You don't want everybody ordering whatever they want, you want it to go through where somebody's saying, this is necessary or it's not necessary. Same thing we do with the supervisors, same thing we do with library expenses. So we've seen that taking little steps has, has created a better savings. I've seen a huge reduction in what our supplies are since when iceberg's came here, but I recognize that there's not somebody whose main focus is this. So when I'm in budget season and passing budget season and we have Q C F and we have referendum, we're looking at it as best as we can, but I would like, I mean, our, our supply budget, although it's one percent, you're still talking about a nine hundred thousand dollar component because of how large our budget is. So when you look at nine hundred thousand dollars worth of money in supplies, to me, to have a, somebody who's, and this includes what I'm picturing as a software because I'm sure there's gotta be some component of either, so you know what we have currently and stop buying, extend it out.
I started school bills.
So that's part of, so that's part, part of what that component is, it's not just a salary on there.
Just a point of information, Emily, many, many, many years ago, when I first got on the board and I had Elise on there, we had copy machines like all over the place. And it was a lot of money and we were like, why can't somebody walk down the hallway and make copies? Not tell them to walk on the outside of the building, but, and we saved a lot of money from that, especially with torn and stuff like that, so, you know, it's hard. Mike?
Um, a couple things. First of all, I would think that the finance staff member that, that we think is gonna save us money in the long run in a centralized supply initiative, I would think that, you know, when we hire them, next year you look back and you see what was the cost savings and, and you adjust the budget next year for that. But I think you have to really get into it a year to, to realize cost savings. Cause it's, I'm sure a centralized supply initiative means that things are gonna be, have to be bought to store, store these things in and, you know, space has to be allocated.
We keep them in the buildings but they're locked.
Right. The other thing, the other thing I would ask is, that special ed education finance person, if that person might also become a grant writer, a regular, a, a general grant writer, um, to, you know, thinking that we're going from no one to someone.
I'm not against the idea, however, I will caution you, we're talking about a special ed budget that's thirty million dollars here. And, you know, once we start piling on more responsibilities and then all of a sudden, we don't see the results that we were looking for or yield the results we're looking for in, you know, grants and extraordinary aid and IDA and what the, the real reason for the position was. I'm, I, I think, one, we should start with what the purpose of it is and then maybe take it from there. If we see that maybe there's a slow month and there's no grants that'll work on and there's a grant out there we want them to start looking into, but, you know, that's just my only fear was grant writing is very time consuming. And I just, you know, I know that's something, I just don't wanna pull it away from.
Any, any, any other thing is, you know, I'm not against, I'm not, I'm actually not against the one-to-one technology, going to additional grades and stuff like that. But that's again, something that I would rather see the, the, the initial one. The initial one roll out, I would love to see the district, after that initial one rolls out, to actually get more addresses with whatever the district decides the direction it wants to go with it.
Mark?
I think we need to put some money aside for banking. I appreciate all the explanation that you can give regarding the extra help, but I, I do wanna reiterate that something that was said by Brooke, seventy-five percent of our costs are due to employees and yet year after year after year, we're adding more and more employees. The question I have is, can, as Emily stated, can other individuals pick up on some of these jobs rather than hiring additional people? Now, you're saying that number twelve centralized supply initiative is going to save money. How do we make that assumption that we're going to save money when the job has not even been created? So that, that's one question I have.
Okay, so based on some of the small steps we've been taking with just centralizing in certain departments, we've seen a saving. So taking that rationalization and saying, well, what if we expand this to janitorial supplies? Or instead of every custodian ordering, you know, telling us what they need for their building, because maybe they just order that every year and we really don't know what they're using or not using, we would realize the savings there. Same thing with just regular supplies that they use for, for classroom markers, the dry erase marker quarters. Instead of maybe them being laying around the district and people just don't know where they are and they just order more. don't know where they are, and they just order more. So it's something, just from doing very small pieces of centralized, I've seen what a large impact that it is, that it makes.
So why can't the supervisors or the department heads, whereas in the way of the custodians, the head custodian, take upon that responsibility? Whether you may have to pay him stipend, but it's not going to cost $95,000 for these extraordinary individuals to do it.
Yeah, well, so this does also include a software component, because I think the first step is going to have to be to identify what inventory we currently have. Because I say to people all the time, and it might seem very frivolous, but if I see somebody ordering dry erase markers, I say, no, you're not ordering, because we have some in the draw over here. Send them over. I'm not signing the purchase order. Maybe it's only $3. I understand it, but that's the way that I view it, that if you don't need it, I'm not going to order it. If I know that there's something else somewhere in the district. But in order for us to identify, so for like for CUSAC, for instance, I'd walk through every building. For budget season, I walk through every building, look in every single classroom, and if I could open every drawer, I probably would, Mark, but I don't do that. I know that there's things, supplies, that I would like to have an inventory of, just to know what we have on hand first, and I think that would reduce what we were ordering.
Okay. Regarding individuals, I could see us having hired at least a dozen new positions over the last two years. I don't believe any of them have disappeared within the last two years. So what I'm saying is, once these people are hired, they're not going anywhere. So it's 50 cents here, 25 cents there, this is all cumulative. So next year, our budget's automatically going to be going up another $2 before we even start because of all these new individuals that are being hired.
And I just want to add, just to Emily's point as well, talking about tax increases, I just want to remind everybody that we brought in full day kindergarten. Full day kindergarten required additional staff, to hire additional staff, it required additional supplies, it required additional classroom space. We're now having an enrollment issue. There's a lot of students here. How do you support the students in the classroom? Not everybody's a gen ed student, some of them are at risk, we have to add a resource teacher, we have to add a gen ed teacher, we have to hire another music teacher, we can't fit the sections in.
Something I would be remiss, a superintendent, by bringing stuff like that. We are expanding all the middle schools. When these middle schools open a year from now, we are going to be having this conversation one year from now about additional staff. So, you know, I don't want to blindside anybody, but we know that if we're increasing 200 and some students to a building, 100 and something, we potentially may need guidance counselors, we may need more elective teachers, whatever it may be. So, I mean, that is realistic, that this will be a year from now. So I don't want, you know, if we're sitting here a year from now, you're like, again...
I'm not talking about those individual positions, I'm talking about other...
I understand, but I just want to, I want to, we have to take that into consideration a year from now, we will be...
That I understand, I will present.
What was your information?
One second, Mike has his hand up first, and then, wait, one second, are you done?
I'm done, thank you.
Okay. Mike to go, and then Wilker, and then we're going to wrap it up. Did you have any to add?
Oh, no, but I would like to.
Okay, so, okay, now I'll let send these people, she hasn't spoken yet, and then we're going to kind of wrap it up.
The one thing I have to say is, I don't think that you, that it's totally accurate what you're saying, because there was a bunch of things that we changed positions on people, and we changed the structure, we changed the whole structure of the special ed department. We changed the whole struc-, you know, and, so we have shaped, looked at positions, and the business office, if I'm not mistaken, that was totally restructured, reallocated some of the positions and stuff like that. So we have been, so, more so the last, more so the last three years, I would say, than we did on previous tenure on the board.
I know that within the last year, with these two special ed teaching positions for the last year, behaviors, whatever, a good five positions at least, maybe six, that we've hired were through attrition. So it was through people retiring, or resignations, or whatever it was. So I know that it looks like we are increasing staff, but it really was reallocating the funds.
Mike, do you have?
Yeah.
Okay, then Cindy.
I just, you know, I don't want to nickel, you know, I don't want to nickel and dime on students. If the superintendent makes a recommendation, I take that very seriously. And so, and I'm sure everyone here as well, but I'm curious to know, what are those positions that we added on? Because I wasn't on the board, and I would like to know.
I'm going to allow, and I don't want to put you on the spot now, so maybe you can get back to through an email.
I have no problem, I can answer that.
You can email.
You were asking about the last year, the positions we hired the last year.
There are a couple of new positions that were not replaced.
Comparing, I know we don't have the projected expenses from last year, but I have it on my phone, but I see something to be happy about. The benefits and the insurance portion of the buy for the last page, last year was, the projected was 17% of the budget. This year is 16%. The OREEs, not that, the repairs were 2% last year, now they're 1%. The techs were, last year, the projected expenses were 0.4%, now they're 0.3%. So I see that the district is making a concerted effort to find savings, but I think we're going to need to find even more savings to echo what Michael and Mark are saying. We have a projected growth, like you say, Ron, and we have the expansion of the middle schools, and we have a program that we are committed to with the full day kindergarten. But at the same time, you know, we could only put so much on the taxpayers' back, you know? So we need to make sure that those positions that are serving our children directly are prioritized over everything else. And, you know, I mean this with all due respect, and I know the, Ms. Bartley, you're doing a very good job in watching over the money, but I would like us to, for the long haul, to do even better, not better, to be even more laser focused on looking at anything that is a duplication of service, anything that could be a potential fraud waste or abuse. And I know we don't have it, because in the, in the financial audit, we pass it with flying colors, you know? But being that we have, that enrollment overcrowding is a major issue in our district, and with the technology, with the technology responsibilities that we're going to have in terms of the updates that we need to bring on board, we need to watch every dollar, because the taxpayers can only take so much. So, that's one of my comments. But thank you for what you do for our district.
Cindy?
I'll wrap it up.
I just wanted to say, as far as the additional items go, I also would be in favor of five, six, seven, and 12. I listened all night, and I was going to raise my hand, and then somebody else had, the question was answered, so I was not going to reiterate myself. I think that we will be surprised, or pleasantly surprised maybe, is that, when the aid comes in? Because I thought that these figures were going to be a lot higher prior to the aid coming in, and I am encouraged that we will all be able to look at the aid and be able to digest exactly what we're going to be putting out for the, you know, to the public as far as the increase. I also want to give accolades to the central office for putting this together, I know it's a major undertaking. And Brooke, I would, I would like to, as far as the purchasing and everything, I know if you're purchasing in a law firm, you're purchasing in a law firm, maybe you could call several different places to get pricing. I know for a school district, there are a lot of checks and balances that you have to put in. You can't even put things on a credit card in a school district. There are different codes and guidelines and whatnot. It's not just, you know, saying, well, I'm going to order from this place on Tuesday, but then when, next Thursday, when this goes on sale, I'm also going to do that. It's very intricate, and a lot of people don't realize the ramifications that go along with the coding, because it's all state regulated. It's not Brooke sitting behind there saying, you know, I'm going to do this. So a position of that, that you have going out there, I think would be very beneficial, because they are in the mix, they'll have the software, it'll all be, I think I could get on board with that, just knowing the different ramifications of how you go about purchasing things. It's just not like me and you.
Thank you, Hudson. I just want to wrap it up real quick with just a couple comments. First of all, getting back to supplies. All our teachers have the proper supplies they need to teach their programs, am I correct? That is correct, right?
Yeah.
Okay, because that became an issue a couple of years ago, that people are all over the place saying that they got to buy their own supplies, which I know is not true, but I just want it to be said. Number two, 1744 is the, right now, without the state aid and without all the other stuff, that is your base tax increase as of right now in that average time.
Yes.
The 2226 is if we added everything on that list, again, without the thing. So I just want everybody to understand that if we didn't add anything from that list, 1744, and then if you get the state aid and everything else, it could possibly go down a dollar or two, or whatever, it could go down.
Yes.
Just want to make sure everybody's understanding that, because I don't want everybody to get stuck on the 2226 number. That's only if we add a few items and it'll increase that, correct?
Yeah.
Well, I'm saying, if we had all the items, but we only had a couple of some of them, all the items. Okay. Brooke, first of all, and Pat, and the whole central office, and Nick. No, I'm saying this because, I don't, one thing I don't think people really understand, let me rephrase that. Sometimes I don't think some people understand that running the public service system budget or budget is totally different than running a company budget. They're two different animals. People sometimes don't understand with mandates, like we just stated, they're telling you, you got to get a dance teacher, and that's awfully what they're expecting, but we don't got money for you. You know, you got to do park testing, we don't have the money for you. So it's very hard, and, I mean, you do, I know you try, and Wilker, I appreciate what you're saying, we're all feel the same way. You might look every which way you can, but the one thing we will never do, I think I can speak for the board, we'll never cut something that's going to hurt our children. You know, I mean, that's, unfortunately, in this state, the public funds be charged in public education, and that's just the way it is, but great job again, and hopefully we'll have all our numbers in and everything else, and we're ready on the 14th, and then we can get ready to adopt it.
Thank you.
All right? Does anybody from the public?
Just, I'm sorry, just for clarification for me and Pat to go back, are we going to present on 14, 5, 6, 7, and 12?
Yes.
Okay.
Is anybody in the public, please step up, sign your name, state name.
David Driver, 310 Allison Street, of course, I mean, considering we have a referendum, around $20,000 is pretty great. I have a question, so the additional money from last year, where some of it was put toward security and some of it was put toward the 101, like what was that spent on this year, and how does that impact these costs? Does that help offset some of these costs?
To me, that just adds me a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm just, I'm just...
Okay. So the additional money, the additional money from last year, for the one-to-one and for the security, does that offset any of these costs in this budget?
I think that's in the budget, correct?
So, I'm not sure if we're going to, if we're talking, we're talking about this data that we got in additional July.
2.1 million.
So like $40,000 for technology.
So last year's budget, we put $400,000 in with the adjustments for all of the infrastructure upgrades in anticipation of the one-to-one. So all of that has been, still working on it, it works, but there's certainly, but that's separate, separate from this.
Now we're getting to the actual purchasing, the devices, the one-to-one devices, that's what you see there. That 209 is actually the 600, 700 devices that we're looking at.
And then there's two staff that come with that, so, and then on the, I don't get focused.
I see a dual statement.
And then, so, but then to add for number eight and number nine, or nine in favor, I guess, there would need to be additional technology staff for each grade, does that how that works?
Well, it would just be if we, that's our new philosophy.
I understand, and I'll...
If we, for number eight and number nine, if we wanted to increase, if, for instance, if we went to number eight, we would be looking at 1,400 devices in one shop, which would be like, a whole shop for everybody, you know? 1,400 devices in one shop.
The staff is IT, IT people, dramatics on basis.
Yeah, exactly, so to imagine, so that's where number nine will come into play. So I just, I, you know, my, this is, like we said, if we wanted to get up to 22, if we wanted to really be aggressive with it...
I guess the question I have is, you bring in full-time staff for that as opposed to bringing in like a consulting, like a connoisseur or somebody, you know, whatever the educational equipment is of that, like what's, I don't know the cost differences and whatnot.
That's, you know, to be honest, it's, it's actually similar to the cost, and what we see is that a lot of those are going to be consulted, and they may be here for a year, and then they move on to go somewhere else. And we're seeing a lot of turnover in that, where it could be good at times, if we're trying the right person, we may wind up contracting the help they consulted for a short-term fix, but we're seeing, we're yielding better results than our old staff at this point. And it's similar cost.
And for 10 and 12, which are both, both mentioned that they could provide those immediate cost savings, why not build that into the budget and take that money from wherever the cost savings you expect to be, even if it's, so instead of it being $90,000, maybe it's $30,000 in that budget, as opposed to putting the entire line item in this budget, if you're expecting the cost, I mean, you know, kind of your money where your mouth is in terms of...
I agree with you. I guess, you know what it is, Dave, I just think that what we're looking at is, and I think when we all go home, and I'm not making excuses, I'm saying, we all go home and you digest this again, I might call, make up tomorrow morning and say, you know, I really do like to add nine, 10, and 11, let's let go with it, well, not 11, I'd add some dance teacher, that's...
We...
But I'm just saying this because I agree with you, that's why I brought up also like buying the buses, because it's a state aid day now, we're going to need them, let's get them, and that's like, as Nick stated, buying two at a time is better than buying all of a sudden now, the state might come out, that's another thing the state will do. Well, by the way, next year, all your buses got to be three-point, no matter what you have, but now you got to buy them. Really? What was the money for now? And, you know, we're right back to the tax burden.
So this is obviously very preliminary, as Brooke said, we're waiting for our numbers to come in, but now, until next Thursday, I mean, I'm sure we're going to sit down tomorrow, and we're going to look at this and rework it, so, you may wind up seeing something a little bit different, or better, or whatever you want to say, buy next, buy next.
The capital improvements, does that not, could the kitchens be done in the, with the capital improvements?
Yeah, how does that work? They can be done with the capital improvements, if there's additional, we had to put stuff in there. At this moment right now, we're just trying to build it in, like I said, again, another thing too, is that this is, and I know everybody understands this, but this is a budget, it's the outline of all your costs. At the end of the year, you might not use it, so, we can go to capital, but we also, even though like a lot of people here have big numbers, like they might have heard the other night, what Brooke stated, is that you got to always be careful, because the capital is also for your emergencies, like, well, a couple years ago, we had a boiler blow, yeah, boiler and roofs, but boiler went up, and it was like $20,000 or whatever, a million dollars, I forgot what it was. So luckily, I was able to help us save some money. But yes, it's something that we can look at, you know, because that's, you know, we got to look at the whole thing. And again, it's all preliminary, because I got to be honest, I said, you know, some of the pricing we got to, it was like, I want to double check.
But buses and transportation are not under capital improvements, that's not something coming up.
I can just add a little bit to that as well. Some, what, I can't take out a capital reserve with equipment.
Okay.
So there's a component, like if I'm talking about having a bulk serving operation, I can't take that out of capital reserve, because it's a piece of equipment, with the theory being, I buy it for a warm point, I could wheel it right over Linkcrest.
It's got to be packed in buildings.
It's not tacked to the wall, exactly, then it's not a capital improvement.
I'd really like to see you do that. I'd really like to see you do that. Six burners, stove with wheels and just see you going down like Phil on Avenue to the link rest.
I have one more question about weighted enrollment because there seemed to be a little bit. So every student that you do find and disenroll, that counts toward that weighted enrollment or counts, that actually saves the tax credit money for every student to be fine, right? Because it's weighted enrollment formula?
Yes.
Yeah, so it does. It's not insubordinate, five thirty students.
Unfortunately, we're not, we're not reducing, it's not just we're adding.
Sure.
Yeah.
You might reduce forty students, but it might take up fifty. But it's still seventy-nine. Yeah, exactly.
There was, there was an article, a history paper, of two schools, two school districts that are actually shutting an elementary school down. You know, enrollment's down, there's DED, there's caught, teachers are losing their jobs. We don't have that problem. What's that?
Maybe Brooke could wheel that school.
We don't have that problem in Feralon. We have, we have to keep that in mind.
I guess one more question. Debt service, is that two, is that three now referendums of the debt service included? Finishing up the high school, is that?
It's all existing debt.
All existing debt, but not high school, I think.
High school was two deaths in three, two in four then, two deaths in there was probably twenty or twenty-five years. We refinance them as when we're eligible.
So I just.
We're hoping they can make a million soon and then we can, you know, pay all that off one shot. Four million.
Well, seriously, well, I covered it.
You can tell, you see that right shot. Yes, you can. We're not being insulted. We're just trying to follow.
And I respect it. That's why I'm asking.
And I appreciate that. Robert, you can stand back up. No, sit down.
Robert Williams, Maxwell Place. Thank you for allowing me to address the administration and the board tonight. I'm pleased to see that we have mentioned in the budget plans tonight. In October, I had presented the administration and the board with more than ten years' worth of REACH budget numbers. Just to refresh there, back in two thousand nine, the teacher REACH payroll was three hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars around. And the supply budget was around twenty-six hundred dollars. Today, the teacher payroll is two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars and the supply budget is one thousand dollars. That is a huge loss of about forty-two percent in ten years. Parents are very happy with the proposed changes to the REACH program and we're looking forward to learning more in the upcoming months. We understand that adding another teacher is part of the proposed changes. I ask the board to please consider all financial changes that will result from this hire and from any additional resources that a revitalized program will require. This is a program that has lost a lot of money over the years. I hope that you will see a financial investment in REACH, not as a new expenditure, but as a restoration of a program that is highly important to the district. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Robert. Thank you.
Come on, my man. Give my email, I think. I'll make sure.
I, you know, I think this one, I'm just going to do this real quick. Sorry, one second. You don't have to go any further. I believe it's three thousand supplies, not one thousand.
Okay, because.
Budgeted for next year.
Oh, for next year. Oh, I'm sorry. A thousand for the past year.
And I will look into that and email you as well.
Okay, that's great. Thank you so much.
Good luck.
If you're in seventeen ninety-nine, we will drive. Couple of quick questions. First, we'll talk about state aid. When will we know? And after we know, we will have a chance to relook at some items.
So hopefully, the governor's address is tomorrow, where he will provide us with what they're funding. We'll be in the next two days after that, so hopefully by Thursday, we'll have an answer of what our state aid is going to look like. And then the next time that we meet, I'll have to put that information into the budget. So we'll see whatever impact it has as well as the additional items that we discussed tonight. So it's really only one more time that we'll talk about it. And this is, you know, this is kind of, this is the state's timeline. So the state doesn't release the information until us, but it's still due on the fifteenth. And the document that we have to put together is for everybody, we have to put backup. Our budget document is about this big that goes to the county office. So it's not just us clicking a button. There's a lot of backup that we have to provide. So it's very time consuming.
Just want to join everybody and thank you for this. I understand it's a lot of work. I participate in raising budgets for my company. I know it's a lot of work. One more thing, in the main part of the budget, the one that gets up to seventeen forty-four, resulting from new staff, you listed, you stated who these people are. I tried to jot them down. I'm sure I didn't catch all of them. I just recommend that maybe you guys should look at who these people are with kind of, just give it a little, just pay a little more attention.
The new staff you're talking about.
Yes, new staff.
Right. They're actually very, I got you. They're very late on the street, aren't they?
They're earlier than last year.
Really?
It's usually supposed to be February. It's supposed to be February that they do their, they give us our state aid figures. We're late this year, but remember last year, because it was a new governor, I feel like, I don't think they did it until the end of March.
Yeah. Okay.
Credit nullified around foot terrace. I know one of the costs is healthcare. Any way of combining the municipality with Board of Ed as a one, full network healthcare cost instead of borough and Board of Ed?
I am going to defer that question to our lead negotiator, Mr. Gene Banta, who is very adverse.
I can also just comment that we're in state employees' health, state educators' health benefits plan. So the benefits plan that we're in is exclusive for educators. We're giving it different rates than municipal.
I'll just follow up. You mentioned last year, that came up in one of the workshops. And it's two separate statutes. And when I asked, is there any thought of, you know, putting them together to get up to the rate? Question was, the answer was, nobody in Trenton is even thinking about it.
So Trenton doesn't want to look outside.
No, they're Trenton, they're just like, well, they don't care.
With your copiers, I work for a copier company and one of the places I work at has a program that will, should say highlight, will notify whatever, like many, a machine need tone. So I don't have to go to each device. I can look at one program and say, okay, I need to order two tones.
We have that.
You have that here?
We do.
Okay. That's it.
Thank you for your suggestion.
Winter.
Yes, last year, it was, we almost doubled it. It was, actually tripled it, I guess, from a thousand to three thousand dollars supplies.
So when you do sort of like an offer request, how is there discrepancy in those numbers? That's where the thousand dollars came from, the district.
No, we're questioning, next year, three thousand dollars. This budget over here.
That's fantastic. That's great. Thank you.
Cindy, you got the last, last thing.
Oh, I just wanted to, I just wanted to remind the board that I'm going to be attending the meeting on the fourteenth via phone. But I just want to also make the board aware that any questions or concerns I will have taken care of prior to that evening. So I'm not going to be on the phone saying, what are you talking about? I will be informed. So I will be able to cast my vote with no issue.
I just want to, I just want, I just want to remind everybody and talk to the people, the new members of the board that back, probably talking about timelines, that six or seven years ago, maybe, all of a sudden, I remember, it was St. Patrick's Day, we were told that one million dollars was getting cut from our budget.
Two thousand and ten.
Was it two thousand and ten?
Yep, two thousand and ten.
And, and that you still have to have the budget in by that statutory date. So it was like the surprise, the, but, St. Patrick's Day surprise.
So we don't have another one of those.
And I got a motion to close. Second, all in favor? All right. Thank you, Ruth. Have a great night.